I invite you to join me with me in the invitation. Dear Lord, we come to you in prayer this evening to show our gratitude for all you have given to us. We are thankful today for so many gifts. We are thankful for our family. We are thankful for our friends, our community, our church, and our employees. We are thankful for our veterans who have given us the freedoms and the opportunity to voice our opinions and vote freely for the person of our choice. Lord, lead us in our decisions and let us show respect in all that we do. In your holy name we pray, amen.
Amen.
First item on the agenda is approval of the minutes of the October 21st regular session.
Motion approval, second.
Motion by Councilmember Townsend, second by Councilmember Aldridge, further discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Next, we have a series of public hearings. First one is a zoning map amendment 2408, 1214 PD Avenue, request for the rezon from General Highway Business and R, uh, two RO, excuse me, General Highway Business to Residential Office. Staff, if you would introduce.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members, Mr. Clark. This is case ZMA 24-08, the applicant and owner of the subject parcels, SNC Properties LLC. Tax record numbers for the two parcels are 25492 and 7092. Tax record 25492 is located at 1214 PD Ave. And tax record 7092 is the vacant adjacent parcel to 1214 PD Ave. The parcel sizes combined is 0.91 acres approximately. Here's an aerial view. This, this parcel has an existing structure, and this is the vacant parcel here. Existing zoning for both parcels is GHBD or General Highway Business District. The requested zoning for both parcels is RO, Residential Office for Use. And the reason is the applicant would like to develop these parcels for residential uses, and GHBD does not allow residential uses. Looking here, the existing building previously had, I think, a commercial front use facing PD Ave, and then had, I think, three apartments in the rear. But it hasn't been used for that purpose in quite some time, so it sits vacant. And the adjacent parcel is, of course, undeveloped. The applicant would like to renovate the existing structure into four apartments for residential use, and then has an idea about developing the vacant parcel with either potentially duplexes or possibly townhomes at some point in the future. Utilities are available to both parcels. Topography is fairly level. It does slope from PD Ave down a little bit, but then flattens out in the, in the heart of the parcel over here. Here's some recent photos of the subject parcels. Here's the existing structure. Side view, rear view, other side view. Some of the adjacent uses, there's a church across the street, gas station, catty corner. This is the vacant lot pretty much here. Here's the vacant parcel. It's an existing structure that, separate from this, but the owner is looking at redeveloping this at some point in the future as well. Going through, here's the residential use across the street, some other residential uses. Looking at current zoning, everything in purple, including our two subject parcels, is GHBD zoning. And up here, this little bit of yellow here is R10, General Residential. Orange over here is RO. And then down here, you have some, in the olive, you have some R6 residential zoning. As far as adjacent land uses, pretty much this whole area is a mix of residential and commercial. Some commercial along PD Ave, some commercial along East Main Street, with some residential scattered in. 2028 Land Use Plan designates these two parcels as Neighborhood Residential on a future land use map. As you can see here in brown. In summary, staff believes there are merits to this requested rezoning, and find it to be generally consistent with the future land use map. As regularly scheduled, meeting on October 3rd, 2024. Planning and zoning board voted unanimously to recommend city council approve the rezoning application as requested with a statement of consistency and reasonableness shown below. That concludes staff's report. Be more than happy to answer any questions council might have. And please note, the applicant is with us here tonight as well.
Council, have any questions of staff?
Go back to page 10, the current zoning map, if you will. Just a question.
Yes.
It appears that 7463, which is to the left, there you go.
Yes.
Is different shaded?
It is, it is shaded orange, these two parcels here.
So that's, that's what you would say is orange, is that right?
Yes, uh, yes.
Okay.
Closest to orange.
That's fine, it didn't look orange, I was wondering what you were alleging. And then the olive then is across the street, is that right?
Olive is down here.
Across the.
Comes out better on the TVs on the wall. See that far, but yeah, olive is down here, which is the R6. And then you have some R10 up here.
And the request is for?
Similar to this, the RO, Residential Office.
This is a very loose ended question, I realize, but I know the whole area leading up PD is a very nice area for town. And I, I saw it was approved eight to nothing by the board. Whatever's going to happen out there, hate to ask it this way, is it going to be nice and pretty? Or is it going to be tiny little houses on four feet apart, whatever? What are we getting, what are we getting into out there? That's, that's a very visible part of our town right there.
I mean, in, in this case, for, for this vacant parcel here, it's not that very large. When we're just taking a general look at it, we're thinking it might be, you might be able to fit maybe five, four or five duplexes, maybe six to eight townhouses, and not more than that really.
Brad, you said the applicant is here, you may speak to that question.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Nanda Kandasami, and I live in Davidson.
I didn't hear you. You live where?
Davidson.
I said Davidson, I live in Davidson, so the question, can you clarify the question?
Tell us what your plans are.
Oh, the plan is, so the, the building that we have right now, we're going to take the storefront off, and then make that as a four unit building. Currently, they have a storefront, it has not been used for a while, and we bought it in 2022. And when we, and then backside of that building, I think they had three unit residential apartments units, the backside. So we're going to take the, the storefront and, and make everything residential, and make it as a four unit building. So that's the first step. And then for the vacant unit next to it, we haven't completely planned yet, but like he said, it'll be either duplexes or, or townhouses, whatever. You know, like, we were, we are obviously going to work with the, the planning team to make sure that it, it fits the, the neighborhood and put those units there. And that is at least, you know, several months away, I would say.
Further questions, council, of staff or the applicant?
I do, I do have a question for staff. And I know it's not directly related to zoning map amendment 24-08, but since 24-08 and 24-09 are in such close proximity, I see that 24 or 9, they're asking for GHBD. And then with this being directly on the other side of it, residential, does that cause any concern there? Would it being so close to GHBD setbacks or anything of that nature?
No, 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 not at all, not in my opinion at all. It is further down the road, but the existing use on the next case is an existing use, and it might expand in the future, but it's already there. And I don't think having residential on these two parcels will affect that or vice versa, because you have residential in this area over here already, that kind of exists.
And is that the only portion, and some council may know, is that the only portion of PD Avenue that's not included in the historic district?
It goes, I can't. Where does it end?
It is before Mar Avenue then.
I think it's past Mar, I think it's past Mar Avenue. In the 1100 block maybe.
That vacant lot.
I don't have it pulled up, but I believe it ends right here at Erie, on this side of the street right here. If you could see that, just before that, it's on this block. This, this, none of this is included in it, so. And we do have, I think as Brad mentioned, we do have, was this, I can't tell. Yeah, that's RO, right? Yeah, that's RO and R6 right here, yeah.
Further questions of staff or the applicant? This is a public hearing, anyone who cares to speak for or against, please come forward.
Move to close the public hearing, second.
Have a motion by Councilmember Aldridge, opposed to public hearing, second by Councilmember Townsend, further discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Council, question before you.
My only concern, I'll go ahead and just state it for the record. My concern there with basically coming in off East Main, we're at the fork where you can go to East Main or PD. To me, that's a main corridor entering into our downtown district for anybody out of town. And it always, in a sense, in the past, had that, I guess, business type appeal to, to, out of, you know, just people in general, local citizens as well as out of town people. And I would hate to do away with that, with that character, the character traits there, you know, entering into our downtown district.
I have, I have an issue. I, I just cannot visualize some duplexes and some houses. No way I could approve something that, that loose ended in that particular part of town where we have, like you say, it's a very visible part. And, and I can't imagine what could be put in there with that kind of description.
Brad, they would also have the option, council would have the option to actually do one parcel and not the other, should they choose, correct?
Correct.
So they could do the one that's got the existing building on it if they so choose and not do the other.
That's correct.
I think I would recommend council look at just what the market is there right now. We've got a lot of buildings that are sitting there in very poor condition, not a lot of reinvestment in them. The, the house that's here right now is zoned commercial, but it's been used largely for multifamily. And the applicant is going to fix that property up, fix those apartments up so they do meet code. The other property right there, the, the rest of the property there on the corner on Erie. Now, I, I suppose you could have some commercial go in there, but you've got some topography to deal with right there easier also. So it would probably be easier to deal with that on, with individual, with smaller units and stuff for houses than it's going to be for commercial. We have talked about access into those, we've talked with the applicant. DOT is, is probably not going to allow for several driveways off of that, so they'd looked at a, a shared option off of Erie, would that be in the primary entrance without driveways coming off of PD and Main? So that's an option as well there. But I think, you know, in general, with residential right across the street and with an apartment that's already existing right there, I think they could make these work very well at that area.
Evan, go back if you will to, I think it would be slide number four. Right there. So currently, I mean, I can't remember when this has been used as a residence.
I don't ever remember.
It's, it's, the apartments have always been rented out.
Yeah. It's, it's a, it's a legal nonconforming, I guess you would call it. I, I think it's legal nonconforming. There's, there's nothing in there right now though, so they, they have to take care of this. But there were, there were people living there for quite a while.
What I have seen, I was, I was bringing my thoughts together, what I have seen there is a mobile car wash on a regular basis over many years, and it was there, there too. That's right. So that's the only, that's the only building on, on that parcel currently.
That, that faces.
Right, that faces PD.
PD, the others up on East Main, the old travel.
The light colored building.
Yeah.
That's, that's different parcel.
That's not, yeah, that's not right.
That's just reference, that's where the two buildings are.
Right.
That. Coming in off Ridge Street, there's a tremendous amount of traffic coming in and out of, from the west, east side of town, or coming from the north, the west side over to the east. So did I understand you to say that the only entrance on that one side was just going to be off of Erie? I don't, I didn't quite get all of that in my mind as to how that was going to work.
Yeah, we haven't, of course, we don't have any designs or anything like that yet, but we've talked with the, with the owner about that. I mean, PD would remain an option for an entrance there. Our concern is that entrances, front loaded driveways off of Main Street are probably going to be a problem, so they may want to consider a, an option that kind of has a shared entrance off of Erie, that they can share all those, and that will, traffic will be able to go out to those intersections there rather than coming directly out onto PD or to Main. I do think that would function better. I'm sure DOT would probably agree.
It just, I don't know, I just, we're just beyond that parcel. And that, I'd like to see more of an in-depth study with regard to the traffic and how that would come into play, be it your scenario or whatever else, and how DOT is going to recognize the issues that are there in order, as to how they're going to make their decision, because I, I'd hate to see this guy get deeply involved in this, and then all of a sudden the DOT says, that's not going to work.
No, 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 absolutely not. We would talk with DOT first before they go down that route, as we always try to do anytime there's development on one of these. Keep in mind, you're probably only looking at three or four residential units that would actually have access to the Main Street side.
Right.
More likely than not, they're going to want a certain distance away from Erie Avenue. Then they're going to want a certain distance in between driveways as well, which is really going to limit you to probably no more than one driveway in right there. And at that point, it's easier just to go ahead and use some, use something off of Erie Avenue. Of course, that's, you know, normally we get down to that once we get into the design phase of everything, but I would imagine that those stipulations would probably play into it.
They would use existing driveways for the, for the current building, correct?
That's what's proposed right now, yeah. You've got a, you've got a driveway in right where you see that white truck, there's a driveway in right now to this building. And they could also do some kind of shared access thing here where this could go back and they could access that as well. So there's definitely possibilities there.
Your honor, if I may ask a question, you, you mentioned earlier, and I will echo my fellow council members' comments about the, just the, the, the way that's going to look sitting in there. But I think you mentioned earlier, we could actually approve the, the existing structure there for the four, if, if the, if the applicant wanted to renovate that and make four apartment, apartment center.
You have two parcels before you, so you could do one parcel and not the other.
Yeah, I'm, I'm okay, I mean, we've got, we've got plenty of houses that need redone in the city, so if they want to, me personally, I'm okay with, if we want to do that on that, on that parcel, but I don't, I'm not sure about the other.
The floor is open if council has a motion.
A move that we allow the one parcel with the existing structure and not the other.
You move that we allow the rezoning to Residential Office for Tax Record 25492 with the consistency statement?
And the reasonable statement as well, sir.
And deny the second parcel, tax record 7092, with the inconsistency statement?
That is correct.
Okay. I have a motion on the floor.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Aldridge, further discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
What against? Moving on to the next public hearing, zoning map amendment 2409, 1420 East Main Street is asking to change a split zoning of General Highway Business and Neighborhood Residential to entirely General Highway Business. Staff, if you'll introduce.
Okay, this is case ZMA 24-09, the applicant and owner of the subject parcel is Mallard Point Investments LLC. Tax record is 19598. Parcel is located at 1420 East Main Street and has approximately 0.68 acres. Just wanted to quick run down here to show you the zoning map, because it gives you a much better idea. So here's the zoning map, the current zoning. And this line here, here's a subject parcel, this is the dividing line, and this half is on GHBD, and the back half is zoned R8. So that's the situation we're looking at. So again, existing zoning is split zoning between GHBD and R8. The request is to zone the entire parcel with GHBD for a few different reasons. First, R8 does not allow warehouses. So in this situation, and kind of the rear two thirds of the existing warehouse is actually a nonconforming use at the moment. GHBD does allow warehouses, and therefore would bring the entire building into zoning compliance as well as permit future expansion if desired. And just number three, just to remove the split zoning and have one zoning district for that particular parcel. Again, existing use is warehouse, proposed use is the same, utilities are available to the site. There is some topography that comes off of East Main Street here. It's a little flat and then dips down where it levels out here in the rear of the parcel. Here are some recent photographs, this is coming right off the road, so it's again level and dips down as you go towards the warehouse, you can see it a little bit here. Some commercial uses across the street. This is the First Care Medical Clinic, it's an adjacent property. And then there's some, some photographs of the rear portion of the property, which has some, some fairly dense vegetation and some ivy. And then here's a gas station, it's also adjacent use on the other side. Again, looking at the zoning map, split zoning here, all the pink is GHBD. All the yellow here is R8, and you have a little bit of different yellow, lighter yellow up here, which is R10. Looking at some of the adjacent land uses, it's a mix in this area of commercial and residential. So here, along East Main, you have a lot of commercial, here's a medical facility, and then back over here, you have some residential, some single family homes. 2028 Land Use Plan classifies this parcel as Neighborhood Residential for the future land use map. Down here, so, once again, staff believes that there are merits to this request of rezoning, and find it to be generally consistent with the future land use map. Planning Zone Commission voted eight zero on this case as well. Recommend to city council approve the rezoning application as requested with a statement of consistency and reasonableness shown below. That concludes staff's report. I hope you're more than happy to answer any questions.
Is applicant here?
The applicant, the applicant's representative is here, yes.
Be a tough question then, only representative then. Council has previously heard on this property, a plan to divide off the back part of this property and allow for Eastover Avenue to go all the way through. Is there any type of agreement in place that allows for Eastover Avenue to be built as the developer has previously talked to council about?
I believe that answer is no, but John, or you want to?
My name is John Williams, and I'm representing Ben List, this is his property. We have talked about that right away at the end, and Mr. List is open to talking with a developer and doing something with that piece of property, but right now, we're not making a request to do anything like that right now. But the main thing is, is he can't do anything with the building, can't even add a bathroom to it because it's split in half. So he just wants to be able to use the building, is the main reason.
Mayor, I did bring this to the applicant's attention at the time. The rezoning on this will not affect the ability to do that. They're not going to be able to build in that area anyway, so that's still on the table for the future, we could still accomplish that.
And I'm glad you remembered that, Ron, because I sure didn't remember that.
Council, have any questions of staff? Do you have any questions of the applicant's representative? This is a public hearing, anyone who cares to speak for or against, please come forward. Motion to close public hearing by Councilmember Hall.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Hunt, further discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Council, what's your wishes? The request is to remove the split zoning General Highway Business District and R8 Neighborhood Residential, and make it entirely General Highway Business District.
So move with consistency and reasonableness.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Hall to approve with consistency statement, second by Councilmember Brandt, further discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Council, would you, and I don't think I did this on last, so let's approve ordinance 2441. Motion by Councilmember Hall, second by Councilmember Drive, further discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. We'll back up now just a minute and do that other ordinance, I need a motion to approve ordinance 2440.
So move.
Motion by Councilmember Drive.
I'll second it, but then I.
With the, with the amendment.
Right, it's got to have, make sure that, that's, that's got to be in there.
Motion by Councilmember Drive to approve 2440 with the amendment. Second by Councilmember Hall, further discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Now let's move to 4C, zoning map amendment 2412, Concord Road and Sunset Avenue to change the zoning from General Highway Business District to R8 Neighborhood Residential. Staff, you introduce.
Okay, this is our final public hearing for this evening, this is case ZMA 24-12. The applicant is Stephen Aldridge. The owner is the estate of Stephen L. Whitley. However, the property is under contract to be purchased by the applicant. Tax record is 5246. Location, as you can see from the aerial below, is near the intersection of Concord Road and Sunset Ave. And this is the subject parcel. Parcel is approximately 0.96 acres. Existing zoning is GHBD or General Highway Business District. The request to rezoning is essentially a down zoning to R8 as Neighborhood Residential. The reason is the applicant would like to develop residential units. The reason is the applicant would like to develop residential units and the general highway business district does not allow residential development. Existing use, the parcel is now currently vacant. There are utilities available. Topography, it's a very level parcel and it's pretty much cleared except for, I believe, one tree, small tree in the middle, and it's not in any kind of floodplain. Here are some recent photos. This is looking towards Concord Ave over here. This is looking at the subject parcel across Sunset Ave. This is looking at a small commercial building here that houses Greg's Barber Shop and Second Street Gallery. This is on the rear portion across Sunset Ave. You have some residential, single family homes. And this is looking west, I believe, from the subject parcel. Here's the current zoning map. Everything in pink is our general highway business district, including the subject parcel, and everything in yellow is R8 neighborhood residential. So for land uses, the adjacent parcels around the subject parcel are mostly either single family residential or there is some commercial. Again, here's commercial use and there's some commercial uses down Concord Road. 2028 land use plan classifies the subject parcel as neighborhood residential as a future land use map. So staff believes there are merits to this request of rezoning and find it to be generally consistent with the future land use map. Planning Zone Board voted eight zero to recommend city council approve this rezoning as requested with the statement of consistency and reasonableness shown below. So that concludes this staff report. Again, be more than happy to answer any questions. And the applicant is also with us here tonight as well.
Counsel, have any questions to staff or the applicant?
Did you say how many units would be on that?
Yeah.
So he's asked how many units.
So again, we don't have a firm kind of design yet, but I think when we looked at it, it was maybe eight. So it's just under an acre. So maybe five, maybe four, four to. Maybe, maybe four, four to five, Chris?
This is a public hearing. Anyone who cares to speak for or against, please come forward.
Move to close the public hearing.
First by Councilmember Hall to close the public hearing.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Hunt for the discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Counsel, what's your wishes?
Move to approve zoning map amendment 2412 with consistency statement, Your Honor.
Motion by Councilmember Drive, second by Councilmember Hall, further discussion. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed? Motion carries. Coordinates 2442.
So moved.
Motion by Councilmember Hall to approve ordinance 2442. Second by Councilmember Townsend for the discussion. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed? Motion carries. I have no agenda adjustments. I have no unannounced delegations. Move on to consent agenda 7A, approve ordinance 2443 to update chapter 77 traffic schedules to be consistent with the recent changes of the crosswalk. And what this does is change the number of footage from third streets since we're moving the crosswalk.
Move approval ordinance 2443.
Motion by Councilmember Hall.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Hunt for the discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have the Safer Grant Award and Mr. Clark, I'm going to let you introduce that.
Thank you, sir. Chief Kendall's coming forward to make a presentation, but in prelude to that, let me sort of set the stage for city council. This is for information tonight, although you will be asked to take action on this at a future meeting, which we have slated for November the 18th. What we wanted to do tonight was just introduce you to the Safer Grant Award and what that means to the city if it's accepted by city council. So this is again, just an introduction information for you tonight. On November the 12th, we have a special call meeting scheduled at which time First Try-On, our financial advisors will be here to provide a financial outlook, which will incorporate the impact of this grant and 10 new positions moving forward budgetarily to the city. So at that time, you'll have some questions to ask about, you know, the financial impact. And then we would schedule for November the 18th for your regular city council meeting for your consideration, either to vote up or vote down acceptance of the grant itself. We are under a timeline. We do have to respond back by November 23rd as to whether or not we want to accept the grant or not. But this is an opportunity for the city in consideration of some growth that we're seeing. And I won't steal any more thunder from Chief Kendall. But I did want to set the stage, just so that it was clear, we weren't, we are not expecting any action tonight. So that, Chief, you'll make your presentation, sir.
Mayor, city council, good evening. Our presentation is to go over the purpose and the Safer Grant and the benefits that it's going to provide to the community. I'd like to take you through the whole presentation, and if you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them at the end. So FEMA has awarded 191 departments Safer Grants this year totaling $360 million. The City of Abilmar Fire Department has been awarded a $1.8 million staffing grant by FEMA. City council has been very supportive of our application previously, and we want to, we're very thankful for that. The goal of the Safer Grant is to add positions in the Abilmar Fire Department to better meet the National Fire Protection Agency criteria, which is known as NFPA. The NFPA is 16 firefighters minimum on a structured fire call. AFD currently has 14 firefighters on structured fires. Training, vacation, and sick time reduces our staff of 14 to approximately 11 or 12. The Safer Grant, the Safer Grant would also add 10 full-time firefighters. That would be three personnel per shift as well and as assistant fire marshal. The grant staffs, the grant staffs the ladder truck for all calls and meets our NFPA standard. I'd like to cover some of the benefits of additional staff. Added staff can improve the fire department's ISO rating used for insurance purposes. ISO ratings are based upon multiple factors, including water systems, communications, and call responses, and many more. An improved ISO score may lead to a lower insurance premium for homes and businesses. AFD's ISO classification improved in 2020 from a class four to a class three. We were 5.59 points away from a class two rating. So adding the properly staffed ladder truck to all fire calls increases our opportunity to improve our ISO rating to a class two. Over the past three years, call volumes have increased by approximately 150 calls per year. The city has annexed or is in the process of annexing approximately 955 acres and has approved approximately 3,800 new homes or townhouses. The Safer Grant solves our staffing in the present time and in the future. So here's how. As I mentioned, the added staff means the ladder truck is in service on calls. We will be able to cover staffing. We will be able to cover staff taking trainings, vacations, and sick time, and the grant builds the foundation for staffing a possible fourth fire station. The need for a fourth fire station will be covered in the comprehensive land use plan currently underway. So you may be wondering if and when we build a fourth fire station. Will we need more firefighters? The answer in the Safer Grant, the answer is the Safer Grant will allow us to staff the station properly. And how? We will already have a fully staffed truck to go in that station. So that's going to conclude our PowerPoint for this presentation. Thank you for your time, consideration, and I'll answer any questions you may have.
If you would, for our audience and those listening in, could you take us through the process of how we applied for the Safer Grant or however the case may be?
Well, in 2021, we applied for the grant the first time. We used a grant rider and we were not successful. Grant, a grant is based on many things in the, you know, in the city. So in 2023, we were notified again that we were eligible to put in for it again with the grant rider, which was, there's only a small cost for that. And so I come before council got the approval to put in for the grant again, and we applied. And I was not expecting the phone call that we received that told us that we had been awarded the grant. That was the process that we used for getting this grant.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Kenny, I think just to follow up to that, might as well make it black and white what we're talking about here. Again, for the public that are listening, this $1.8 million will take care of three years.
Yes.
Is that correct?
Yes.
And is it 100? The grant will take care of all three years. Is that right with no match?
I know that. There, there is no match to this, but in the financial part of it, whenever we get to that part, you'll be able to see that there's going to have to be some add to it.
Right. And that's, I mean, I know that we're not talking about that tonight. I know that we're talking with.
Well, high level, this covers salary and benefits.
Right.
It doesn't cover equipment and other things that are associated with each.
And then, and then once that 1.8 is gone, then that's something that we will pick up in years to come.
That's correct.
Chief Kendall, he was talking about the different elements that it take to reduce the ISO rating. Water, communication, call responses. And just from the outside looking in, without being a fire professional, I would think that the call response is the only thing that we probably really lack in where this additional staff will help in that capacity.
Yes. Our water system is probably one of the best they'll find. There's, there's parts in the water system that we need to improve, but that's between me and utilities. That's basically dealing with fire hydrants. The other part of that communications is we have no, we have nothing to do with communications. That's all the comm center, the 911 center. But where we can benefit is the, the fire department side of it in our deployment and our, our staffing, how many firefighters we send to a call. It all equates into the whole picture.
Of course, apparatus would be a part of that as well, too. Apparatus.
Apparatus, yes, sir. Right now, we're, right now, we're running three engines on all structure responses, and we need to be running that ladder truck, but we don't have the personnel.
Okay. And I do recall whenever we reached that all-time low in back in 2020 on the ISO rating, how often are departments rated for ISO?
Every five years.
Every five years.
That's the, that's their goal, every five years. We're coming up real soon and we, we're trying to capitalize on that five years.
Thanks, sir.
Good job.
That was my question.
That was your question. Your question? Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Mayor, just one more comment. I know we had talked about doing our strategic planning session on November the 12th, but I felt like this was appropriate for us to sort of shift and talk about financial outlook in consideration of these positions. And we will shift in December to have a special call meeting for strategic planning at that time.
So we are hearing the, are we not, from First Try-On next week?
Yes, on Tuesday. Yeah, we'll just shift to the COG and strategic planning in December.
Yeah, First Try-On's, yeah.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Kenny.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chief.
Mr. Clark, I will turn it over to you for comments.
Yes, Mayor. I had a question earlier today about the status of our public housing program and accomplishments we're making with renovations of properties. And I'll just take a moment to recognize Darren Rhodes to come forward and talk just for a moment about that. Darren, thank you. We have Renee Miller also with us tonight. Renee's, she's getting her feet wet here. So Darren and Renee are going to tag team here. Thank you.
Mayor, council, thank you for allowing us to address you about a brief update on public housing. Renee Miller's been with us for, going on her fourth week now. So she is using her vast experience and knowledge in public housing to evaluate our operations. She's working on day-to-day procedures with the staff, taking a lot of headway in making sure that we interact with the residents in a manner that's efficient and effective. We prepared a formal presentation, or we plan on preparing a formal presentation on housing to be presented to council in January. And just wanted to let Renee provide some information for you tonight and answer any questions you might have.
Good evening, mayor, council. As Mr. Rose stated during my, this is my fourth week. I've actually been evaluating processes, getting onboarded with the City of Abilmar. In my time of, in this time that I've been here, there are things that I see need to be streamlined. One thing would be the plumbing issue, as you all are aware of. So me and Mr. Rose have been in conversation as far as what can we do to speed the process up? Because the residents are being inconvenienced, we're not able to service the outside community because until we are, have the current residents transferred and back in place in their original units, it's hold, it's putting a stop on us filling units off the waiting list. So that's my main focus right now, as well as redefining the culture in the, with the staff. I'm sure you all are aware where that, you know, there's been a transition in staffing. So we're working diligently together to make sure that we understand, you know, what governs the public housing department according to HUD and the policies and procedures as well as according to the City of Abilmar.
Can you give us updates on numbers for apartments?
When you say numbers, are you saying completed numbers?
Completed, in progress.
Okay. Right now, I don't have a comprehensive list, but I do know that there are, when I came, there were six units that were completed.
Six?
One, six.
Six.
Yes. One since I've been here at this point. Right now, we have approximately 14 units that are 95% completed. As I stated, as far as the process, there is a procurement process that has to take place. And we are working with the contractor to see what is best for everyone as far as purchasing of the supplies. It is with understanding that the City of Abilmar was purchasing the supplies in, in the offset. Then the contractor decided to purchase the supplies himself to kind of speed up the process.
And that's kind of the concern, because he has not done what he, we were told he was going to do. At this point, by our count, we should be about 30 apartments that had been finished. And we're nowhere near that. So we have a lot of concerns about the contractor not doing what he claimed he could do.
And I understand that Mr. Mayor and me and Mr. Rose did in fact speak of another contractor, saying that that was an option. I can say when I first got here, and I started on the 7th. On the 9th, I walked units with the contractor. I did. Every unit that I walked was a total of eight. He had someone in all of those units working. I have videos, I have photos of the things that were being done and taking place at that time.
Just to follow up to that, I'm really concerned that we were. Just to follow up to that, I'm really concerned that we were told in July that we would have so many done by August and so many done by September. And I'm not throwing anybody under the bus. I just, as you have indicated, we're, we are not doing the residents over there complete service or opening it up to other potential residents.
That is correct. I, I don't have any documentation as to what was promised prior. I basically came in and put my boots on the ground to see where we are and see what we need to do to get things expedited.
So I will just, I'm looking at the attorney now. It seems like to me, Mayor, and to Britt, we talked about this a little bit, about the contractor not being able to do things. Did we, did we ever put anything down with any kind of follow-through on that? I can't remember.
We received a timeline from the past director of what, when, when these apartments would be finished, and they've not met what we were told. So I think, Mr. Clark, if you need us to authorize or not, we need to move forward with an RFP immediately to get another contractor in there, and I'm not even saying get rid of this contractor. Bring in a second contractor if we need to, so we can get this process moving faster.
That is our, that's what we, me and Mr. Rose, I presented to him as well. So that's what we are looking into as well.
How far down the road before we'd have an RFP out?
Well, I mean, we can work on it as soon as possible. But I, I can't give an, a date. Darren, do you want to give a promised date?
That is something that we will expedite, and we will, we will shoot for having an RFP ready to go in one month.
Mayor, when you were with the contractor, did he, did he indicate a projected time that he felt like it would be complete or no? Did he mention-
He did. He did, in fact, give me a date on the units that I looked at. And on the ninth, the, the first four units, he would be completed within the week. That was with the anticipation of supplies, okay? Remember, Helene hit. So that kind of shipment of supplies went in other directions, which is understandable. You know, because we had a, you know, an emergency situation. So that kind of put a, kind of a stale stop on being able to get the supplies needed for those four units at that time. And prior, the units after that was coming two weeks. We sat down with, with Charles, the contractor surplus, we sat down with him, and we wanted to know what works best. There was a situation where invoices being processed, so it was different factors and variables. Again, I wasn't here prior, so me coming in, what can we do to expedite?
So follow up to that, Mr. Dry, myself, and the mayor, and who else was with us, and Dexter, went with Darren back, when was that, in August when we walked that? It was hot, July. And there were just little things that appeared that needed to be done, and several of those that we, okay? And those may have been the six that have been finished. But I agree that we, we've got to do something. We've got to get another additionally, because if we've got them there, they need to be finished so that we can put people in them.
Renee, we don't hold this to you. We've heard these excuses for six months now, and it's time to stop hearing excuses and get these things moving forward. That's the reason we need to bring in another contractor so we can get these things moving.
I understand, Mr. Mayor, and I'm not here standing-
I'm not holding that to you anymore.
Yeah, making any excuses or anything. Again, Derek, in the test when we had the meeting, you know, my main concern was what can we do to expedite this process? What can we do to streamline this process? So I do understand.
Thank you.
Ms. Miller, you indicated that fourteen units are approximately ninety-five percent complete. Are those fourteen units practically waiting on the same thing? Okay, all right.
Have, I know, Darren, I think we may have chatted about it at some point with a performance guarantee.
Yep.
If we change contractors, can we put in a performance guarantee that puts them on a schedule to provide us with input problems so that we're aware of them beforehand versus being surprised after the fact? So I think we've got to do something to say, you're responsible, and you're going to be accountable, and realizing that probably the biggest problem we've had has been getting product. I think the VCT was a problem there for a while, trying to get the vinyl composite tile in. But at this point, I think everything that we can do to, to add structure to moving this project towards completion is in our best interest.
Yeah, and I agree.
Very good, thank you.
One last question. Are you fully staffed now?
No. Still have an open position for a maintenance supervisor and resident services slash procurement capital funds officer.
One of the things that interests me is, over a long period of time, we've had an awful lot of work to be done at that place. What responsibility do the residents have to, to, to live, to keep those, that property such that we don't have this massive repair work going on?
Plumbing, that's a part of preventative maintenance. I think it's a collaboration of residents as well as the department to make sure that we are, you know, one, yes, the residents report the issues when they come, but there are pipes that are old, they're rusted, they, they're, they've expanded their life expectancy at this point, based on what I've seen going in the units. But in, in the, moving forward, you know, making sure that the department has a preventative maintenance schedule in place for all systems, and to educate the residents to make sure that they understand as a leaseholder, they've signed a legal document, and there are responsibilities that they have as a resident, just as we have as a landlord.
Dr. Bramble, to answer your question, though, the issues that we deal with now as a council are not general household maintenance issues from, that the residents should be responsible for. These, these are issues that we, as a city, as a council, as past staff members of the Department of Public Housing have neglected over the years, and we plan to catch up.
Well, I just remembered, we, we, we had to replace two, over two hundred interior doors. When do you have to have to replace an interior door?
So Renee, I think there are periodic inspections of the units.
Yeah.
So those, those are some things you're going to be monitoring very closely moving forward as far as just general maintenance items.
You got a problem. You got a problem. Good luck. Good luck.
Well, you have our support.
Ms. Bird, you have a comment?
This was mainly towards Councilmember Dry's comment about the performance guarantees. In the, the next contract, if we're going to hire an additional contractor, we can put some scheduling timelines in there. I think what we're going to run into, though, there's always an allowance for unexpected delays, and it sounds like the supplies are the primary issue. So just to note, even if we put the timelines in there, there's normally an exception for unanticipated circumstances.
Further questions or comments of staff?
Thank you very much.
Darren, Renee, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Darren.
Thank you.
Anything else to come before council?
Mayor, I'd just like to, my, my wife told me to, to mention in public Ross Holt's housing, his people. She is tickled to death with the limb pickup that's going on. It's the best probably we've experienced in many years in town. So whoever it is out there that does that, my wife thanks you.
And I would just add to that, the leaf pickup, since we're, you know, the city is doing that, and it was just, it's so good. And we're up to par, and it, we're, we're, we are where we ought to be in whatever zone we are. Two things, Mayor, we're still doing county COG on eleven-twenty-six, is that right?
That is scheduled at the Health Sciences Building, down here at the Piper Building, and we'll be there on twenty-sixth, six-thirty. Anybody that is not coming on this council, please tell me, so we have a head count. Anybody not going to be there?
Thank you for doing that at Piper.
I'm going to assume all of us are going to be there then.
That's good.
Just need a head count, what we need.
And just a, a thank you to staff continuing to do what they are doing, at least locally, for our friends in the mountains. On behalf of the league, I'm going to be at a meeting in Morganton on Friday with the hundred and thirty-four of those municipalities who have been impacted. So we may have a list of things that they want us to do moving forward.
Back to the COG meeting just a minute.
Oh, sorry about that.
Anybody that might have a topic that, or a program that you would like to see us cover, let me know, and we'll try to get something scheduled. Anything further to come before council? All right, I'll entertain a motion that would go into closed session, sure, General Statute, one-three-three-eighteen-eleven-A-five and six for real estate and personnel.
So moved.
Motion by Councilmember Dry.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Hunt, further discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion into regular session.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Hunt, further discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Coming out of closed session for real estate and personnel, we have nothing to report. I'll entertain a motion that we adjourn until Tuesday, November the twelfth at four P.M. at the Waddell Center for a special work session.
So moved.
Motion by Councilmember Hunt, second by Councilmember Townsend, further discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.